The back of the base will supposedly have more American and Vietnamese emblems and casualty information, but that's not presented to you today, nor has it been presented to or approved by the committee. The soldiers on the rubble is an accurate depiction of an actual photograph, but the separate citadel wall in the rear is fictional and does not belong. There was no citadel structure left to retake in September of seventy-two, just rubble. The pagoda at the top has been embellished unrealistically per a nineteen-sixty-eight actual photograph. This design is incomplete, too big, gaudy, garish, disrespectful, and does not accurately depict history or who was involved. Without superior American air and advisory forces, this short-lived victory would have never happened. As it is, the Communist North reoccupied Quan Chi town a short time later and the entire country in nineteen-seventy-five. I have ideas on how to improve this design, but no time to present them and know that no one that will listen. How can you approve this flawed monstrosity yet not the Quan Chi Victory Foundation's monument? Hell froze over because I dislike this design even more than the foundations, but both disrespect America. A nonprofit has not been formed, no funds have been raised yet. The committee was not supposed to recommend a location, but they did, Westminster Park, which will go before the Community Services and Recreation Commission soon, and then before you. Westminster residents, Vietnamese, Hispanic, and alike, will not tolerate losing any more park space to war monuments. Parks exist to provide open space for all residents of all ethnic groups, of all age groups, of all walks of life, for relaxation, family fun, team sports, and recreation. No one wants to think about war and death while out having fun in their local park, including our beloved Vietnamese refugees. It's like shoving a PTSD trigger and devastating loss of country right in their faces when all they want to do is have fun in the park. The war memorial at Freedom Park is beautiful, symbolic, and unifying, but it should have stopped there. Instead, more foreign monuments were added, some not even related to Vietnam or America at all. And I'm very sorry, the native country of South Vietnamese does not exist anymore, but this is America, and when they took the oath to citizenship, America became their country or should have. If built, this monument should go on private property along Little Saigon's Bolse Avenue along with Vietnamese visitor center and/or museum in conjunction with the city's Little Saigon Blueprint for Investment Plan to create a true Vietnamese cultural district and worldwide tourist destination that we can all be proud of. Residents are sick of this monument issue, and they're sick of the council's bickering. You must vote for what is best for all Westminster residents, not just one group, your political careers, or fear of retribution. You must listen to all the people you represent. Thank you.
Is there anyone here that did not submit a speaker card that would like to speak? So seeing none, Mayor. If anyone on Zoom wishes to raise their hand to speak at this time? Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak. We do, we have received various ecomments that were submitted and included as part of the late communication and are currently listed on the agenda.
Please.
All right. So the first one is from Elizabeth Digiteri regarding the Quang Tri Monument to be placed at Westminster Park. We represent the District Sixty-two Challenger League that plays all of our baseball games at this park. We understood Westminster Park to be the place Westminster was putting emphasis on regarding the disabled community. Our league serves those with disabilities from five cities Westminster, Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, and Midway City. We're proud to call Westminster Park our home field and are very grateful for the relationship with the city, Kewanis, and other agencies that have made Westminster Park the perfect park for our disabled population. We heard about the monument being considered to be erected at Westminster Park. We have concerns that this addition to the park would not benefit the disabled community or our baseball program. Would it cause heavier foot traffic and less parking for our families? We are already challenged with parking there. Would it be a distraction for our players to flock to and think, and think it is for their benefit? Would it be an obstruction for those that are not ambulatory? Would it take up precious green space in our beautiful park? Is it benefiting the community? A monument that looked, that took place outside of this country is not. On a side note, the president and vice president of our league both reside in the city of Westminster and have so far for over three decades. On a personal note, we do not feel this addition to this park is anything to consider. Thank you for your time and consideration sincerely. Chrissy Land, President, District Sixty-two Challenger League. Liz DeGater, Vice President, District Sixty-two Challenger League. The next one is from Bill Vedder. And it reads, "Request to be, dear Mayor and fellow council members. You're about to vote on structure to memorialize the Quang Tri Battle in the fall of seventy-two. I am definitely opposed to placement in any public park or using public funds to build. Rather, such a monument should be on a private location, preferably within Little Saigon along Bolse Avenue. A culture center showcasing Vietnamese culture such as a museum would be a good choice. Although a committee was formed to elicit public comments, suggestions on who and what should be honored, the committee seems predisposed to erect a monument that is not historically correct, confusing, and relegates English and American involvement to the backseat. There was no talk or discussion held on competing ideas. It was a foregone conclusion to build a monument of five soldiers dancing as three soldiers raise a flag in front of an undamaged citadel. They claim this honors the fallen Vietnamese Marines and civilians of Quang Tri, but patches below seem to include much smaller and lesser important groups. A major problem is we don't know who these groups and patches represent, their importance in the battle, or why they deserve higher honor than American air and naval support, nor does the committee. There is dominant theme of writing in Vietnamese from the title down to the description. Why would I, an American, non-Vietnamese-speaking citizen, want to continue reading if English doesn't appear on the third line until the third line? For that matter, this structure will have diminishing importance to second, third, and fourth generation Vietnamese as time goes by. The citadel was destroyed, complete ruins. Monument is inaccurate. In a public environment like a park, do I really want to see a foreign battle being honored when I go to take my kids to play softball? The structure is better suited for a museum, a nonprofit venue to house cultural art and history. My preference is a memorial that honors the memories, their uniqueness and value of those who fell. As depicted, the monument honors more the maker's intent to exploit for public consumption a battle that loses its significance after fifty years. Saigon fell, and democracy in Southeast Asia was snuffed out.
We done?
Yeah, no, there's, there's more.
Right now, we don't have any other public comment, right?
We have, we have several. I'm sorry, I was, she was bringing to my attention that you cannot hear me. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Westminster City Council, Quang Tri is not significant for the city of Westminster within the state of California in the United States of America, as Westminster city residents since nineteen ninety-six and pay taxes to be used for necessary expenses such as roads, police, emergency services, et cetera. A monument is a nonessential expense, and you should vote no on this project. Our city has a main Vietnam War memorial. We do not need to spend city funds on this proper Quang Tri monument. We believe the city council needs to recall that Westminster has residents of various ethnicities that could warrant additional monuments at city expense. Three Ta, Chi Charlie Nguyen need to focus on homelessness and all of Westminster's residents, not just people of Vietnamese descent, Wayne and Suzie Elliott, residents of Westminster. Next, to Westminster City Council, I disagree with building on any part of Liberty Park. I would appreciate a vigorous effort to repurchase all of Liberty Park or whatever appropriate name residents wish to name the park and to establish fines against council members who orchestrate these sales. Once an open space, educational, or other cherished site goes in, it is for good reason, and it should not be tampered with or compromised by foul interest during vulnerable times and should be expanded as it stands. These things are important, and future generations will see this and not like this. Thank you, anonymous Huntington Beach resident. Next, "I'm a long-term resident of Westminster. I grew up here and chose to return here to raise my family. I'm absolutely appalled at the proposals for the Quang Tri Monument. I am in strong opposition for a specific foreign battle to be memorialized in our public park spaces. I don't feel this is something to which our city needs to be contributing funds, time, or space. The proposed Quang Tri Monument is enormous. It appears it will remove a chunk of usable park space about the size of a two-car garage when you factor in the space needed around it. Does it really need to be that outrageously large? Westminster already has a tasteful Vietnam War memorial at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. This Quang Tri monument seems to be attempting to overpower its surroundings. The one installed in San Jose is much more tasteful and appropriate if we must recognize Quang Tri. I made it, I made it partway through the dense text in English. Extremely long sentences, incorrect grammar, confusing amounts of information, a memorial for a battle should not have endless paragraphs of explicatory text, especially when it is badly done. It presents itself as having never been properly educated in English, which reflects poorly on our city. It suggests that either Westminster schools are unable to educate our students, or that the city and the monument sponsors are too inept to utilize the resources to do this properly. Either way, this embarrassment would be permanently etched in our, in stone for generations to laugh at. Westminster already has a deficit in our park-to-population ratio. If you must approve it to avoid yet another lawsuit for the city of Westminster, partner with the business in Little Saigon to put it on one of the shopping center properties. Don't take away our limited public green space. If you do choose to move forward with this monstrosity, please have the decency to have both a native English speaker and a historian to review the text as well as ensuring the monument correctly follows the United States guidelines for presenting American flag and armed forces insignia. I respectfully request the Westminster City Council deny approval for Quang Tri monument and instead focus their time and effort in addressing the rampant homelessness and increased crime that is blinding our city. Sincerely, Joanne Paul." The next one, "Dear Mayor and City Council, I've been following discussion about the Quang Tri Monument and have to say that as a longtime resident in the city of Westminster, my opinion that we are wasting valuable time and resources on this project. There are many more issues that should get this much time and attention. The crime rate in our city is up, homelessness is up. I have my own nonprofit that supported families this holiday season, and our, our requests for support were way up. We had so many requests from people desperate for help that we had to turn families away, which was heartbreaking. People in our city need help, safety, and resources to make their lives better. What are you doing to help these issues? Before you waste time on issues surrounding a monument or any other nonessential project, please ask yourself, is this going to make a tangible positive difference in the lives of the residents of our city? If the answer is yes, make a plan and get it done. For example, we have been talking about making the homelessness issue a priority for several years now, and nothing really has been accomplished. If the answer is no, then move on to something else that helps the people in our city. It's time the mayor and city council stop wasting time with these types of projects and start being the leaders our community need to make Westminster a place people want to move to, not away from. Sincerely, Patty Lee Moos." The next one is from Janice Davis regarding the Quang Tri Monument. "I am opposed to putting the Quang Tri Monument in a Westminster City Park. Our parks are not for monuments, they're for families to come and enjoy the space. I don't think a monument for a foreign war belongs in a public park. We have Viet, we have Vietnam monuments here and nationwide." Thank you, Janice Davis. The next one, "This monument does nothing to move the city forward. The past is the past. Westminster has more urgent and pressing issues to deal with, like the looming bankruptcy. This monument is a vanity piece to those who support it and will have their names inscribed in it. Put it on private property, not public parks." Please have my, please have comments read out loud at the board meeting. From John Verata, forty-five-year resident of Westminster. This next one is, "In doing an internet search on Quang Tri Battle Monument, the following is a summary of the results presented by Google," and they provided a Google address. "This sounds like the U.S. Air Power is being brushed off as a minor participant. It was an air support. It was U.S. Air superiority and power that paved, that paved the way for the Arvin to be victorious," and it states the article. "This sounds, this sounds better, but does not really convey how important U.S. Air Power was to battle. It states an email address. Finally, the U.S. is recognized as being a major contributor to the battle," and again provides the link. "It looks like the U.S. forces are again relegated to a minor role. The United States military did not abandon Vietnam. The U.S. forces were reduced to pave the way for the South Vietnam forces to take over the fight against the North Vietnam forces in a program called Vietnamization." Do you see what is in the results of the internet search? The original purpose of the monument was to recognize the participants in the battle, namely U.S. Air Power and the South Vietnam Military Forces. Instead, the current presentation of the monument has evolved and appears to give all the credit to the South Vietnamese forces with barely any credit or recognition given to the U.S. forces involved in willing the battle, including the U.S. Marines in providing helicopters for the ferrying of Arvin troops, U.S. Air Force for providing precision bombing runs by B-52 bombers and other aircrafts from Guam and Thailand, U.S. Navy in providing air power from offshore carriers. And all the U.S. military provided the necessary air power to significantly reduce the capability of the North Vietnamese forces that allowed the Arvin to be victorious. However, the Westminster City Committee seems to be against recognizing that without the U.S. Air Power, the Arvin may not have fared as well as they did. U.S. veterans of the Vietnam War have been called rabble and, and as being part of a houdini by proponents of the, of the monument. They try to silence the U.S. veterans' voices. That is not a democratic process, and neither is voting for the project on December twenty-one, twenty-twenty before final details of the monument have been presented. Details that can be changed. For shame, all voices should be heard, especially the U.S.-Vietnam veterans. Signed, Gregory Sashnao Zeez, Veteran Army Artillery, One Eighty-Third F.A., South Vietnam, nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-one." The next one, "To whom it may concern, I would appreciate this being read out loud. As a lifelong member of this community, I find this appalling. There are many Westminster residents and heroes who have been served, who have served this country in many wars. Some have made the ultimate sacrifice for our democracy. If you want to memorialize a war hero, make it a Westminster resident. This whole process actually should be put on the shelf until this council can clean the city from within, remove what is inappropriate and what is corrupt. Return Westminster to the beautifully diverse community it was and should be, a city who celebrates all its citizens, no matter race, color, religion, or what side of the aisle they lean to. Thank you, Lori Eller Stain." "As a Quang Tri Committee member, I request to hear all comments in their entirety to be read at the meeting. The depiction displayed that was passed on to the city council by a majority-controlled Vietnamese vote is incomplete, historically inaccurate, has excluded American contributions to victory, done behind closed doors in violation of the Brown Act and Code of Ethics, where this has been pointed out to the city as our committee meetings progressed and documented. The city council needs a completed depiction and display to vote on, want to make it, want to make it as perfect as possible. Public participation has been almost nonexistent with voting done behind closed doors, and we need transparency. Let us remember in the December twenty-twenty approval of the Quang Tri Victory Foundation's monument, American Vietnamese veteran public comments were not read. Lieutenant Colonel Craig Mandeville acknowledged in virtual meeting and disconnected. We need complete transparency." Robert L. Harrison, U.S. Military Committee Member. The next one is from Sandra McClure, Westminster resident. "I'm completely opposed to putting this monument or any other monument in any of our parks. We have so little park space left that it needs to be preserved for families and citizens to enjoy." The next one, "Monuments can be a way to help us honor, learn about, and remember historical events. Members of our community feel that the monument helps honor the legacy of their history and support the monument. However, this topic has absorbed quite a bit of city time and resources, and the design of the monument has been divisive. It is important that we get this right. I have no critique regarding the overall design of the monument. I've tried to get a copy of the text on the side of the monument with no response to my email. Two emails. One council member informed me that the text would be submitted at a later date for approval by council. My only request is that this monument be conditionally approved pending the text, which would be approved by council at a later date. Thank you for your consideration." I have two more. "Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members, as well as residents of Westminster, my name is Deborah Mariscal and have lived in Westminster since January two thousand. The home we live in was my husband's grandparents', and they live, and they lived here starting in the mid-nineteen sixties. Hear my comments, and trying to be respectful as possible. One, a meeting at three P.M. on a workday prohibits those of us who would like to attend to be able, to be unable to do so. I know there are other residents who work day jobs and are unable to give comments orally. An email does not express the emotion or passion of the person making the comments. Two, our additional sales taxes expire soon, and our city will have huge budget issues without that continuing. That absolutely needs to be on the ballot for the residents of Westminster to vote on. Please get this done immediately. Three, our police department is significantly understaffed, and we need to bring our officer count up. I'm stating my concerns for the safety of our residents. Thank you to Westminster Police Department for all the things that they do and for putting their lives on the line for us every day. For the ongoing issue with the monument, so much time, effort, money, due to city staff's time, has been spent on this. In my personal opinion, this entire thing is not in the best interest of all the residents of Westminster. If the organization wants to do another monument, then it should be done on private property, not on public property. They can make little models and sell them on eBay so everyone who wants one could have one. There are plenty of monuments already in Freedom Park. Five, the city council needs to focus their time on the well-being of the residents of Westminster, all of us. We have too many pressing things that have an impact on the entire city than to be spending so much time on something that does not benefit everyone. Six, we need to get a handle on lawsuits. I know that other cities must have issues as well, but we have far too much litigation for a city our size, especially with things involving the police department and now the monument, also with the land sale of the park of, of Liberty Park. These items need to be, need to get resolved. We need to step up and get things done. Stop the bickering and name-calling and be professionals and get things done there that are for the good of everyone living here. I'm deeply saddened that this even needs to be said. I have to say that I have several Asian friends who have told me they would not want to live in the city, and that as a whole, we do not have very, a very good reputation. Shameful and sad. Respectfully, Deborah Mariscal, Westminster resident." The next one, "Hello, I'm writing today to voice my concerns regarding the proposed Quang Tri Monument. Fact, the Quang Tri, Quang Tri Battle Monument has zero to do with the city of Westminster, California, USA, zero, nothing, and has no business being erected and placed in any city park or public property. This only concerns less than half the population of residents in this city, which is discrimination of our tax dollars being spent against us. Please stop spending valuable time and public resources for matters that do not concern the city as a whole. This continuing discrimination must stop. There are so many other matters that are being neglected because of this. Sincerely, Roger Menjum, Westminster resident." Mayor, that concludes the ecomments.
All right. Thank you so much. So do we have any member from the public that can speak?
Good evening. My name is Paul Lee, Chairman of the Committee to Build the Retaken of Quan Chi Monument. Okay, as you know, we own committee, we have eleven member and a twelve alternator who select by Westminster City. The inner recent, the committee worked hard in the couple of months, and we consulted on a senior who involved in the pattern, media. We edit, and we have a final, the drawing to present to you for approval. As you know, the battle of the Quan Chi is a history. So we had to build the monument that must also have on and headed data, must fully stay bow, the consent, as well as the form. The monument we build would own a bow of data. Okay, today I come here to ask you to approve the drawing in order for us to build the monument sooner. Thank you. So right now, I want to introduce, can you want the vice chair to come up over here to detail on about the monument?
Thank you, Paul Lee, Chair of Quan Chi Monument Committee. I am Mayor Tita, Vice Mayor Colomenzor, and she's a member who, she's also, she's and she's also title, and all, with me the City of Staff, and all, audience here tonight. At the, the other previous meeting of the Quan Chi Monument Committee in right here, we already discussed and agree and also approve the, the other important item. I want to answer the question why we in front of the monument, the logo shown here in front of the Quan Chi Monument, we have thirteen of them there. The first is from brigade, division, and above, but not the unit below the brigade and division. That why we did not include too many logo, many logo in front of the base, war base, because the space is limited. So that why the other previous meeting, we already cut and we already approved that the other logo and units, smaller and lower level unit, we will include on the detail in the back of the base, but not in front, because in front, too many logo, it crowded. We add for many logo up here in front of the war base, it cannot be in there. And also, you see that, Ms. Terran just complained that Y and also Bob Harrison were three logo of the United States Air Force, Navy, and Seven Pacific Fleet, the second line, second row of the logo, because we, I received that logo after the other one, and the other one, the first row already present, represent the first court, the other division and above, it not be the level below of the division. And now, so and you see on the left square and the right square, the left square is the English version, we include in honor, we honor all American force, Navy, Air Force, in front face anymore. No more room, look too much crowded, and also that unit, it not brigade or division. That why we, I do not, and we do not put in a front face of the base wall. But we will include that on the back of the, the base, we will include that. All the unit, directly, indirectly, supporting unit, everything, we will put on the back of the war base. We will not forget, we will not forget anything. All the Vietnamese, American force involved in that battle. So we put in the back, include every unit. And also, belong with that, I, we will include all the casualty of the both sides, the communists and South Vietnam Armed Forces and American forces, all casualty, we will include in very, very much correctly and directly, indirectly, satisfy on that battle. I agree, and I will do that. We will do that. And now, may..." And now, may any question, I will answer to any question about it depiction and design.
Yes, sir. So, or do we have any other speaker? If we don't have any.
There are no other speakers, Mayor.
Thank you so much. With that, I'd like to close all communication. And next, we have regular business. First item, resolution reforming proclamation number twenty, twenty dot zero one and resolution number nine A three, we declare the system of a local emergency. Who to approve? Second? All right, we have the motion and second to approve the first item. Okay, so we have to, we have to go on the machine, right?
The motion was made by, by Councilmember Do, seconded by Vice Mayor Lonzo.
It's actually a motion by me.
I apologize. Second by Councilmember Nguyen, duly noted. Councilmember Do?
Oh, I think that we could able to approve on the computer. Yes.
Okay.
Or if you want that you could do a roll call vote, yeah. If that easy for you, yes, that's fine.
Thanks, I think some of the members have not voted on the screen yet, so we'll go ahead and vote.
Yeah, so. Please roll on the screen, please. Thank you.
Well, just so that we are, for clarification, the motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen and seconded by Mayor Ta. And, and the motion carries, everyone has submitted their, their votes, five zero.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I still see in the screen that seconded by Carlos Marango.
Okay, so.
It's up to you, I don't care, really, just mention it.
Yes, thank you, we have made the corrections.
Thank you. Next item, resolution authorizing the conduct of remote telephonic meeting during a state of emergency.
Love to approve.
All right, we have the motion and second to approve this item. Vote, please.
The motion was made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Do. Everyone has voted and the motion is approved, five zero.
Thank you. And next item, depiction and design of the proposed Quang Tri Monument. So may I have a stop report?
Good afternoon, mayors, vice mayor and member of council. The city council appointed the Quang Tri Monument Committee back in September with eleven voting members and three alternate. The committee had met, already met five times and the first meeting was on October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one. At the last meeting on December twenty first, the committee approved the final depiction and design, which has been presented to the city council tonight for consideration and approval. Overall, the committee approved the depiction, design, title and who to honor, including the military group from both the US and the Arvin. It also approved the creation of two sub, two separate subcommittees for fundraising and monument construction. In addition, the committee make a recommendation for the monument location to the Monument and Memorials Committee. Due to the lack of interest, the city council on December eighth meeting had terminated this committee and transfer all responsibility to the Community Services and Recreation Commission. The final design of the monument show five Arvin Marines standing on top of the ruins and two of the Marines stand in the middle holding the South Vietnam flagpole. I'm not sure if you can see the, yeah. There you go. The soldier and the flagpole are set on top of the base, which measure twenty feet by ten feet by six feet tall.
But can we see that on our screen?
Can you?
On our screen?
Oh, you can.
Is it not showing on your screens?
The thing that we have in a staff report anywhere. It's not the same in a, in a staff report, right? Okay.
Yeah, that was the item that was provided and left on the.
Yes, yeah.
I apologize for that, we tested it earlier.
It's okay, that's in a staff report.
And behind the main statue and the base, there's a section of the wall depicting the Quang Tri Citadel wall with a tower gate and the opening in the middle. The wall is about twenty-five to thirty feet in length, five feet thick and ten to, ten to twelve feet tall. There's a pagoda on top of the walls is about ten feet by ten feet. So in front of the monument, the title will be both in Vietnamese and English. The committee approved the Vietnamese title and I'm gonna pronounce in Vietnamese. Tung Dai, tai chi mco than Quang Tri, one nine ching cham bai mi hai. And the English title is Retaking of Quang Tri Citadel nineteen seventy-two Monument. The phrase, to what year in Vietnamese, translated as grateful country, is at the top. Let me go to that slide. The committee approved all involved military branches and units from both US and Arvin to be shown and listed with the monument base. The front of the base, under the title, will show the logo and patches from the US and Arvin's divisions and above. The side of the base will have the narrative of the battle leading to the event. The English narrative will be on top, I'm sorry, will be on the left side and the Vietnamese narrative will be on the right side of the monument base. The back of the base will list in details of all involved units and casualty from both US and Arvin forces. And I would like to point out, there's a minor corrections to the front of the base. It wasn't submitted part of the package. The committee approved the language change a little bit from American ally to American armed forces. The late communication just provided earlier is the initial narrative of the event in Vietnamese and English, provided by the committee member. They acknowledged that it would take time to have a complete and accurate information. So once the narrative are ready, both in Vietnamese and English, they will be presented to the Quang Tri Monument Committee again and the city council for consideration and approval. Next September will mark the fiftieth anniversary of this event. The committee is requesting the mayor and the city council approve the proposed depiction and design of the monument so that the committee can move on to the next phase of getting the project completed prior to the anniversary date, which is September sixteen of two thousand twenty-two. Today, we have several member of that committee, the chairs, Paul Lee, vice chair Kenny Huang, and then the members, Robert Harrison, in the audience to answer any question that the council has. That conclude my presentation.
We appreciate your presentation, our Public Work Director, and I want to thanks all member from the public and also the member from the committee for sharing your input and concerns. All right, so any western concerns from a member on the city council, please.
I'm sorry.
Please, please. That's a member Ho, yes.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, clarification. I believe, I want to make sure the rest of us know whether we're on the same page. Am I okay? Okay, um, there were concerns about the illegibility of the writings on the, on the monument. We're not judging the writings at this time, correct? So tell me exactly what are we approving, the design, the depiction? Not the what, not the text?
Yes.
Not the copyrighting, correct?
Yes. So tonight, the committee requested to approve the depiction and the design. The writing on both sides and in the back of the base of the monument will be completed at a later time and will be bring back to the committee itself for approval and then presented to the council again for the final approval.
Okay, so earlier I heard Mr. Bob Harrison spoke about, there's some disagreement about the patches and things like that, being put in the front or the back, et cetera. Are we, are we approving those at this time? Are we approving the location of these patches and the design? And when we talk about design, is that design of the monument, a design of the, where the patches are tonight?
I would like to see if the commission, committee member would like to answer that question. Um, councilwoman Ho asking, is the council approving the patches right in front of the monument tonight? As is, or that will be worked on later on?
Right, so there are few member from the committees who like to respond, okay. Lisa Harrison, please.
Patches have been presented to you just now. And we're not in agreement, the American side, because of the thirteen patches on the front, there's only three American and ten Vietnamese.
Okay, Mr. Harrison, I'm aware. And if I could just ask a question to, this is a design question. So I'm okay, if you, could you just have a seat? I want to pose my question to the right person and that would be regarding the design that we are approving today. So if I approve the design, am I approving the location of the patches? Am I, if I say yes to this design, am I saying yes to where the patches are? I mean, I would prefer not, but is that going to hold up anything, any of your, your timeline, et cetera? If I may ask you to confer and make, make sure that Mr. Kenny Hong understand my question and help you ans, help me answer.
That's a member Ho, may I interject for a second? That was gonna be, that was one of my concerns and I wouldn't, um, not want to approve this design with the current emblem placement. So my suggestion was gonna be to bring back a new placement with, along with the narrative. Just for your knowledge, thank you.
Well, okay, so would you just answer the question from?
Okay, I am Kenny Huang again. I want to answer the question to councilwoman Kim Lee Ho that all the logo appear in front of the base wall, already approved on the previous meeting in here. So, United States Navy and United States Air Force and Seven Pacific Fleet carrier logo already in front of the, of the base. So the three logos on the American side, we already discussed and approve on the other previous meeting. So now, we cannot very hard and we cannot change the, all the logo in front of the bay at this time. But we will include the other logo, I mean, a unit below the level of brigade or division on the back side of the, of the base wall. Because in front face of the base, we had no more room, too much crowded. And also, the level on the all logo at the same level from brigade, division and above. That way, we cannot include more other logo below, below that level. So that way, I think we, we did, we discussed and we approve all that, all the logo two time, a previous, previous meeting. So we, we hope that tonight there's a, the city council approve for this depiction, design. Then we will move on for next step for the fundraising and for the status construction. And then we will collect some, the minus error information later on, because you know what? In Vietnamese source, in English short, too many, many different number, too many different information, too many different from many other media information. That way, very hard. So we hope that all you please and pass and approve for the depiction and the design tonight. Then we move on, because we have only eight month away from now to the September of nine, of two thousand twenty-two. We need for the status construction and also fundraiser. We want to do something good and better for city of Westminster in here. Not just for our people here, but also for many visitors to win here. Because this is real, real, real historical.
So could you tell me which part takes eight months? You mentioned something takes eight months, which part of the design takes eight months?
The heart is, the long time construction is the, the soil.
Which will be made out of what?
The gimmicks.
Which will be made out of what?
Uh, because.
Those statues?
Statues, yeah.
Okay.
Soldier, married, fine marine statue.
Okay.
We need to be built, to be make right now. So because we have only eight month away from now until September two thousand twenty, twenty-two.
So let me ask you with the, all the patches and the, if we're talking about the writings and all of those things, those are just kind of the cosmetic part, which is, if we reserve room for that, I mean, if we don't approve that at this time, could you still get going with, so that you could still get going with the statues? Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm, I know many people are not comfortable with the translation or the English or the Vietnamese version and then we, we want to get it right. And we also, I hear we're not happy with the patches and where they are and things like that. If we were to approve the depiction, the design of, you know, with the statue, just all the hard, I would say, hard designs.
Yeah.
Right? The general designs.
The general.
But not the specific, you know, the writings in the. But not the specific, you know, the writings and the patches and the locations. And would you be okay with that? Would you still?
Yeah, generally that in major, the major.
Construction.
Yeah, important information might be approved, approved, then we will move forward.
And, well, we don't, I mean, unless we have problems with the five soldiers and, you know, because I know that takes time.
Yeah.
If you're gonna make a statue.
Yeah.
Five statues, right?
Five statue and include with the rubble, the brick, broken brick and rubble and also the flat pole, everything take time and.
What are the rubbles? The rubbles are gonna make out of what, cement?
Yeah, cement.
Cement, so that shouldn't take long.
No, I mean, five soldier statues and also the flat pole. The Vietnamese marine planted on the rubble. What we met as soon as possible, but take a long time to do that. I don't think, I don't think seven months enough time to do that.
Okay. So for me, I, like I said, some of the things that I want to, you know, zoom down and look into and approve that hopefully at a different, at a later time. So the text, the patches, I move to approve the design, the depiction. Except for, I would not approve for the text, like I said, or the location of the patches. I think you need to continue work on that with you, the US veterans, Mr. Bob and Harrison and whoever else, I believe, Mr. Congra, Congra. And and I think when you bring that back, I would prefer, I mean, that would be for the approval of, you know, those two separately, the patches, the location of the patches and the writings. I would recommend that you take a picture of the back, because I don't see a picture of the back at this time. So, but I know that for us, we're really, I think we have to, everybody needs to understand is that back in December 2020? When we had unanimous five out of five votes to allow the construction of this monument. And it was going to be on Freedom Park, okay? So now, it's not like we're trying to take that back and for no reason whatsoever. We're not trying to redo that agenda for no reason. It was because we, you know, you remember what happened, right? And so you know, so, so, so please, you know, I'm not trying to say that. I don't, I don't want us to, to say, no, we don't want to approve. We already approved a monument, the Quang Chi monument. That to me is, has already been done. Now, who is going to take the lead to, you know, to guide or to go through this process of getting it done, okay? So our city took the lead and our council had agreed on that. The majority had agreed that the council is going to take on the lead on that. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to say that, please, you know, we have a, everybody knows that next year, this coming, this year, September 16, 2022 will be around fifty, fiftieth anniversary of the Quang Chi battle. So I understand that the committee, they are very, you are very committed. You all are very committed. And I think you should be excited. And I know the pressure of trying to get this project moving so that you can meet your deadline. And I really understand that and I want our council to understand that as well. So I also keep an eye on that timeline, okay? Because I, we all understand that September 16 is the anniversary, 2022 marks fifty years anniversary, okay? So you know, with that in mind, I would like our council to approve this depiction. And I said, like I said, everything except for the location of the patches, for the English Vietnamese texts. And we want to make sure we work things out, because we want to include, we want to make sure that we reflect history the way it should be, you know? And so I move to approve this depiction and the design. Except for those two. And I would like you to work on that and bring the other two back when you're ready, okay?
Okay, I will work with Bob Harrison on the American side. And we have, we've been together correctly and truly information. And then we will put very in detail in the wall, on the wall of the monument base. We, we, I am still now working on that and writing on that, investigate, research, many sources from anywhere, South Vietnamese veteran, American veteran and other media. I will investigate, research and collect all the correct information. And we will do that and we work together with Bob Harrison after we approve it.
Yes, please.
And monument, thank you.
Yeah, so I need everybody to put your ego aside, just to make sure we look at history and reflect, reflect history, the correct history on this monument, so.
Yeah, you know.
I made a motion.
Can I make a comment?
That's my window, please.
You know, I, first of all, I just want to thanks the committee, all the members of committee for your hard work to work on this community project. You know, the reason I asked for the two members of the American veteran to be part of the committee, because I believe that we need to have input from all sides, not just one side. So this agreement is healthy, this Monday is good. But I always would like to have a cooperation. I would like the committee, the majority of the committee, take the time to understand the perspective from everyone, not just your size, not just the South Vietnam Armed Forces side. I would like to take the size from everybody, especially the community. I see that public comments, how many people, at least ten? Non-Vietnamese took the time to send in an e-comment to voice the opposition. That's not good. You know, we, we asked the city to give us a portion of the public park to build a memorial. We need the support from everyone. We cannot blower through it and say, hey, I got the majority, this is what I want. I don't have to listen to you. No, we need the support from everybody. Those, at least ten e-commerce, they should be voice of support. Hey, this is great, this is a great project, you work well with everybody. Instead of nothing but opposition. Nothing, you know, most of, most of the time, it's like no one listened to my suggestion to comment. And you know, I, I don't know if it's true or not, I wasn't there. This is not the council project, okay? None of the, this project is not belong to any of the council elected official on this government body. This is your project, this is your community. You need to come together and work together with everybody and asking everyone to support the project so that we can build a monument and public park. Initially, it was approved to build in Freedom Park, because we did not have enough information. We did not know that there's no input from anybody else, especially members of the committee, until the groundbreaking. And then that's why most of the member of the committee voiced their opposition and concern. Hey, you know, they never talked to us. Okay, so we established a committee so that we can work, hopefully, with the hope that all the members of the community work well with members of the residents and accept input, listen to them, compromise, negotiating. Instead of, this is my way, this is how I'm gonna do it. I'm not sure that's true or not, because there is three side of every story. Your side, my side and the truth. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking sides here. I'm not saying that whoever voices complaint is correct, I'm not saying that. But I trust the city staff that have been closely with, working with the community to provide a guidance, because the city staff is the one that's supposed to work with, not the, not elected official, not the council member. That's why you never seen me showing up at the community meeting, not because I don't care, but I understand my roles. This is not, I'm not supposed to get involved, I'm not gonna speak when you get involved. And I'm very happy to have, to see that the members of Quang Tri, we're taking the Quang Tri Monument Committee come together as a group to work together and understand the democratic process. Okay, it's just a simple committee, but you have to listen, you have to follow all the rules, you have to follow the Browse Act, you're not supposed to have a secret meeting. You're not supposed to, you know, go behind and talk behind the back and come up with ideas before, it has to be public. And that's the, you know, that's why I support the committee. So the Quang Tri Mon, we're taking the Quang Tri Monument that we've seen in San Jose, it hasn't none of the American Armed Forces emblem in there. Because you know why? Because no one invite the American veteran to be part of it. Okay, if, if, if we did not take action to change it, guess what? We're gonna have, we'll probably have that one right there. And there's nothing we, the community can say anything about it. So to me, this is not us versus them. This is not us like, you know, only two of us, I can, we cannot make any difference. Well, you can provide input, you can buy your critique. But you don't, but at the same time, you understand we cannot win it all. You know, I remember participating in SBA 95 with Senator Janet Nguyen. Basically, SBA 95 proposed by the end of 2022, the California Public Force Education is gonna come up with a curriculum talking about the Vietnamese-American experience in America. And it gonna be, it's gonna come from the perspective of real Vietnamese-American, not from the, from American media, not from whatever we have, information that we have in the past. So to me, this project is basically go exactly what we want in SBA 95. This is our chance to tell the story. And we ask the city of Westminster, the resident of Westminster, give us something to establish the historical landmark that how American, Vietnamese-American settle here and make it flying. So I don't know how the depiction gonna be approved or not, but I would really would like the committee to work well with everybody. I would like to see dialogue. I just like to see understanding, because you know what? Understanding is a foundation of love. If you don't understand each other, guess what? You're gonna say, you, 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 you. You start judging us versus them. Is that what we want? We see in the city go through that war spiral for so long and we continue doing that when we got an opportunity to work with others. So please cooperate. You know, I'm happy that at least three American, US Armed Forces emblems on the, on the, on the monument, okay? It's not, it's not final, whatever it is, but at least it's a, it's a good start, somebody listening. You're talking about historical accurate, okay? I don't know, I'm not an expert on that. I'm sure none of these member of the city council are experts on that. We have no, nothing to back it up. But we're looking for your guidance as a team, as a group to work together and have an agreement, instead of fighting, hating and poking your finger at each other. Thank you.
Right, I'd like to remind member of the city council, right now we have the motion on the floor. So before other council member would like to have his or her comment. So why don't we, why don't we have action with the motion on the floor first?
We have, we haven't get our input.
Yeah, because we have the motion on the floor and if we don't have a second, so the motion will die. So we have the motion on the floor.
Well, we still have time, excuse me, mayor, sorry about that, to have a council have a discussion before, maybe somebody hasn't made up their mind yet if they want to second it or not. So I wanted to hear from some of the council members as far as what they're, what they were thinking. Since I have the microphone, I would like to make a few comments about this situation. First, I want to make sure the public realizes, gee, there's a lot of misinformation out there. This is not my project, this project originated before I was elected and took office in December 9th or 20. So I just acted on to what was brought before me on, on council agenda. Next, the whole reason when this came before us originally with the original from the Quang Tri Victory Foundation, one of the main concerns when that came before us was that the people were being excluded. And you know, I didn't like that, just like council member Do just mentioned, we cannot have people being excluded and that was, for me, that was one of the main reasons that I, I decided to vote the way I did as far as putting a pause on the original monument. And my original wish was that the Quang Tri Victory Foundation kind of put a pause and make sure that they sat down with the the members of the community, the community that were having an issue and hear their concerns and maybe work something out as far as the design and whatever their concerns were. But that didn't happen and here we are today. And like I said, one of the main concerns was exclusion. And here it seems like we're having a little bit of that still going on with this current committee. Whether it's true or not, I mean, only the people who are there would know if that was, that was happening. And the issue with the, with the emblems and all that, I would just make a recommendation for the committee to realize how many you have total and make sure that there's equal representation in the front of it, in the front of the monument. And the remainders be put in the back. My concern was, was make sure the community was being heard. And if this is what the community, the community is wanting, this, this depiction, this is a joint effort and that's what they agreed on, then that's, that's the community decision. And that's fine, it's just to me, it seems to me that there's a, if it was my choice, it was a little bit too big for, for my taste. But that's what you, that's what the committee decided, so be it. I do agree that I don't want to approve this current depiction with the current emblems, the way that they are, so I do agree that we need to bring them back situated differently and make sure that's equally divided. situated differently and, and make sure that's equally divided. And bring that back with the, along with the narrative, so council can see what's you know, make sure it's correct, factually correct. I wish that this result would have been done already. Um, to me, it seems like it's very, it's incomplete. Uh uh, I think there was definitely enough time to talk about these issues and have, and get all these issues worked out beforehand. I think we started in October. And uh here we are in January, still not hashed out. But it's neither here or there. So I'm and council member Ho, I think that was your, your, your motion was to approve the depiction without the emblems and without the narrative, correct? So I'll second your motion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What was the motion again?
Second, yeah.
And I just wanna make sure that
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Well, the motion is to approve the depiction of the design, except the patches, the location of the patches, and the text or the narrative. Correct?
Right.
Okay, so the committee will meet again and resolve the differences. It will come back to the key, uh, the city council for the final approval. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. And here's one more thing is while we're talking about the narratives in English and Vietnamese, you know, I I um, I think it's really important that the Vietnamese is correct and the English grammar is correct. So I, I don't believe that, I mean, I don't believe the committee are the experts in English and Vietnamese. So I would like to make sure you use the, I don't, I I'm not gonna ask you use a particular person, but you know, if you need to, you, you might wanna ask people outside of your committee to make those decisions on the grammar. Because it would be embarrassing for us to, for thousands of years, remember, it's gonna have to sit to make sure that it's correct, uh incorrect Vietnamese and English grammar.
I have another comment. Sorry, council member Ho, um, this is maybe a comment or a question for staff. Um, so there is some talk, I think a couple of the members of the public mentioned that there was a Brown Act violations going on. Um, who and who in the staff is in, in charge of, of informing the committee about the rules, about having this, the process, you know, Robert's rules, and if there is a litigation of a Brown Act violation to staff um or did staff get with the committee and, and, and see what's going on? And to make sure that that's not happening. Because we have to honor the rules, just as council member Doe mentioned. Uh, we had to, this needs to be a democratic process, it needs to be out and open, and that was the whole point of this whole project, that it was public input was being, you know, allowed and no backroom deals. Who is in charge of that, and if, and did somebody uh go to the committee when, if he's, if, if this was uh brought up by the members of the public?
Um, I don't mean to interrupt, but could I call the question since we have a first uh motion, a second, and then we could discuss that after?
Well, first of all,
I think we need to finish the comments.
I think it's fair for the, every council members to have their input in before we vote. So I have not speak yet.
Yeah. So if you want to speak, at least you have time.
Thank you very much.
Now, take, answer that question later.
Sure.
So this committee was started with the um Community Services and Recreation Director, which is Dana Daubert, and she has retired on um in December of last year. So I was assisting her throughout the whole process, so once she uh left, so I'm gonna take it over the lead of this committee. Um, the accusation of violating the Brown Act that I'm aware of, I think it's happened at the last meeting on December twenty-first, when we have two motions on the floor, and one of the member didn't either he didn't hear it clearly, or he misunderstood the motion, so that's why I think he voted differently. Um, we did, at that meeting, we, I also read the co- the statement from the city attorney about a Brown Act and remind the committee members that they have to follow the rules and what do and what, you know, and don't. Um, so for moving forward from now on, at every meeting, make sure that the motion had been made on the floor in a second. I wanna make sure I'm gonna repeat it again and ensure the, the committee members understand what they are voting on.
Well, if I may suggest, I know I, you and I spoke probably minutes before our meeting today regarding this very issue. And I, because I wanted to understand what, exactly what happened and, and was there a really, really a Brown Act violation? Because I, I would not condone if there was one. And you mentioned that, exactly what you just said, and I did have a suggestion for you, and I, and I hope you follow, and I I don't know if, you don't have to follow, but I think uh that most people, they just, you know, if you don't tell people that they should not be translating for each other, as you know, in, in that particular case, I believe the vice chair translated in Vietnamese to the person next to him who was posing the question. And, and that, that was the story you told me. And so I think it might be good for you to just inform everyone in, on the committee if they have a question, perhaps they might not, they wanna pose that question in English and then have you translate, or just so that other members who don't speak Vietnamese don't assume that they're being lobbied, or, you know, or whatever, or being asked to change a vote or something. There's, I believe there was a miscommunication. I mean, I was not there. I'm not, I'm going to assume that going by your story, what the narrative that you told me fifteen minutes before this meeting. So I would suggest that you nip it in the bud, go to the root of the problem, and I'm telling you that most people don't think the way we think, because we've been on the council for a while, so we know that you know, we, we gotta be careful and make sure, you know, the uh optics, you know, um, it doesn't look bad. When we do something, so I think you might wanna just let the council know. I mean, the committee members know that if they have a question or they don't understand, they shouldn't ask their peer, the next per, the person in Vietnamese, and then the person that they're posing the question to should not be answering in Vietnamese, because it should be conducted in English. The only thing I don't know is that if you could be translating, since you're kind of like the neutral party. Yeah, so that would be my suggestion for you.
Absolutely. Moving forward, I, again, I'm gonna definitely confirm with all the committee members, understand the motion on the floor, and if they tell, I would do the Vietnamese translation for them, and make sure that it vote on the right motion.
Council member Nguyen?
First of all, I want to thank you um to all members of the committee. Um, time flies, uh, you know, I, I didn't know that you already had five meetings, which is good that you uh get together and discuss about it. Um, and I want to thank you everyone for that. Um I just have a couple of questions for staff to confirm, because there, there are misunderstandings. Um, and I have a few questions from the people, they're asking me, so I just want to confirm that from the meeting today. Um, I'm glad that people mentioned about the Brown Act. Uh, and I have a chance to watch the meeting on the December twenty-first, the committee meeting. It was a lengthy meeting, and it was a lot of discussions. And finally, vote, uh voted on, 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 on the issues. One of the things is, I know that um director, public director here read the, um, I know that a couple of you don't mention about it already, the Brown Act. And you read the, the director from uh the uh city attorney. So I, I have a question for you, city attorney. What makes you actually get the directive now to uh the public director to read at the meeting? There must be a reason why you're doing that.
Yeah, we had a discussion at City Hall. There were some emails that were out and had made some allegations about uh Brown Act concerns. Um, so we had a meeting with the, the city manager and the Public Works Director. And the meeting was about to take place, or it was relatively close to it, and I said, you know, it would be really good to, to tell them some things about, I mean, to make it clear so that they understand. Um, so I told him what, uh, what I'd like for him to say, and he um he indicated it'd be better if I wrote it, so I, I wrote out quickly some, some things for him to, to relay to the, to the group. Because as you, as was mentioned, a lot of times when you have these groups, they don't understand the rules. So I tried to very quickly uh put together something that could help them understand not to communicate as a majority outside the meeting, that sort of thing under the Brown Act. So that was the reason that it was done, because I saw that there were these emails and allegations, and I felt that it was important to step in and to say something so that people understood what the rules were. And I also told him that if there was a need, I could come to the next meeting and and elaborate further if that was necessary.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question for, for your city uh manager. Uh, I understand that every members of the committee need to take the code of ethics or something like that. Uh, have they all taken it, or where are we at this point?
My understanding, um, if they have taken it, we haven't received all of the certificates. Um, because they do take it online and are supposed to submit certificates. We asked them to take the A B one, two, three, four ethics training, which is a two-hour online training.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next question that I, I just want to verify to make sure that uh is the truth. I remembered that uh over and over again at the several meetings that the council member Doe said he doesn't want this project, it's a city project. And at the same time, uh, council member Ho said that, you know, it's good, doesn't cost the city a damn. And that's clear, that's, that's, that on record. And we have gone through five meetings, and I won't, I know that we will continue to do, to have more and more meetings until the, the project's built. So I just want you to confirm that is it a city project and it's going to cost the city money every time that we have a meeting? I just want to confirm, yes or no, that's it?
At every meeting that we do have staff participations, uh, but I think this is the city's commit, committee. So those are necessary to conduct a meeting for the committee. Um, so I'm not sure staff wise have not spent any more time additionally related to the project or involved in any design or talking to the committee or anything at all, but we mainly conducting the meeting and, and, you know, participate in the meeting with the committee members.
My last question for the, uh, if this is a city project, the mon, the money will be raised by the committee?
That's correct. Staff won't be involved, and all the city staff involve any fundraising effort at all.
I'm just asking that the, the, the money raised to build this monument is to be built, uh to be raised by uh the committee.
That's correct.
Let's say that if they don't get enough money, the city is not going to put out the taxpayer money to, to build the projects, right? It's totally up to the committee to, to furnish it, right?
If the committee cannot come up with the amount of money to build the constructions of the monument, um, staff will if the committee requests, we'll staff will bring back to the council for their consideration, whether they will fund it or they don't wanna fund it. But it's not, staff will, will not make that decision at all.
Thank you. Uh, I said the last question, but this is the last. Um, I also heard, um, you know, over the meeting, December twenty-first meeting, committee meeting, that uh if the council approved today, then there will be a press conference. Who asked for that co- press conference, and is that customary that the city project, every city project, when we approve, then we have to have a, a press conference? And who is, you know, running that, 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 that uh press conference?
I remember correctly that the committee chairman's requesting to have a press conference after the council meeting today um to approving the depiction and the design, and I have corrected him that all of the communication as far as press conference have to come through the cities, um, you know, for, for that, not, not from, directly from the committee.
But not from any of the council meeting. It's have to come from the, the committee.
It comes from the city, yes.
All right, thank you very much. No further questions.
All right, so I think that I appreciate all the comment uh from a member of the council. Right now, we have the motion and the second, so uh call for question.
One last question. Oh, we vote. So if we approved the rendering of this, but the detail on the monument is not being approved, is that correct? So the monument will not be able to build and let the city council vote to finalize the design, all the details, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, here's the thing, is if I may shed light onto that question, comment. Um, you know, of course, I'm, I'm aware of what's going on, and it, it, just because I'm not on the committee doesn't mean that I have like zero uh knowledge of what needs to be done, et cetera. So I, I, I know that uh um there was a consideration of disbanding the um uh of the, this committee after, after this, right? But then I, I understood that uh it, it probably isn't a great idea to do that, simply because the committee would be going back to the council if it were disbanded. They wouldn't be able to go back to the council if it need needed some changes to be made. So these are some of the changes that will need to be made. I mean, first of all, not changes, but these haven't, the, the decision hasn't, haven't been made relating to the English and the Vietnamese narratives, along with the patches and things like that, that they still need to work on together and come to a decision, um, an inclusive decision and et cetera. So so this, this is the reason why the committee's duties are not over. They've been tasked of, of a few things, so then they are going to pick them off one by one and then come back to us, to the council, to ask for approval along the way. Tell me if I'm wrong, but that's what I understood um it to be, correct?
Yeah, this is correct. Um, all the items that you mentioned that need to bring back, need to be brought back to the committee meetings and for their approval first, then we present it back to the city council for final approval.
Yes. And then anything, any changes whatsoever, uh, from, anything that deviates from what we approve will go back. Uh, will, they will ask to come back and, and be agendaised for us to reconsider or consider, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So we still have a long ways to go, and this is just the depiction and the design, so they can get going with their, their, uh uh, I think uh time is of the essence, and uh the timeline is uh we're already in two, twenty-two. To help us, and I think that to help the community as a whole and as to help the committee be successful, what they're being, their task to do, I think uh we just need to move along and
Just one, one quick question. That the, the picture that we see right here, um, is not a historical picture, right? This is a just design that people put it a design, put it together, not a historical picture.
Sorry. That is, that picture is a historical picture, that the, the picture what um take on um September sixteen. September fifteen, either the South Vietnamese Marine who planned the flat on the rubble on about the nighttime. And then September sixteen, they raid the flat straight up when the media and commander come in to celebrate on the September sixteen on the noon time. I am the, I am the airborne soldier what in the barrel from the first day to the last day of the Quantri battlefield. But I, I'm a captain, but I did not directly to capture to capture this Quantri city, but Vietnamese, South Vietnamese Marine soldier. So they planned the, the, the flat. I repeat again, on the nighttime of September 15th, the South Vietnamese Marines, they planned the flat. Then, okay, on the noon of the September 16th, raid, raid, flat straight up for when the media and the commander come in to celebrate it. That is, that is the real, that is the real historical picture.
You answered my questions.
Yep.
Yes, it's, I, I know that you said that this is historical picture. Was there any modification from the historical picture with this picture? Or is it exactly the same?
No, no.
No modification? No. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, uh, we, uh, I get call for question, please. So we have motion and second.
Vote please.
Yes, this is a time for us to vote. Yes, please.
Councilmember Doe?
No, I think that we could able to do it on a, on a computer, on a screen. Okay. So on the, on the member of council, so please vote.
There are still a few that are not, haven't voted on their screen. So the motion carries three, two.
Um, can I make a, another comment? Um, this is for staff. Um, the council's direction this committee was not to give a recommendation for a location. So, um, when the staff report comes out for the Parks and Recs Commission, need to make sure that that is not included in the staff report, that that was a recommendation by this committee. Because they were not, they were not to make that, any recommendation for location. Correct? Thank you.
All right. So I, I just want to re, I just want to repeat the outcome that three vote yes and two abstain, am I right?
Correct.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
Thank you. The abstentions were, uh, by the mayor and the mayor voted.
Thank you so much. So with that, I adjourned, I adjourned the meeting. The next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, January 12th, 2022.
Can I make one quick comment before we leave, please? One quick comments, okay?
All right, okay.
Um, okay. So basically, um, I would like to address the, uh, Quantri, uh, retaken Quantri committee. Um, you, you need to work well with everybody and listen to the city staff because they are the one who guides you, who have enough knowledge and understanding to guide you through this process. Uh, listen to all the allegations, Brown Act allegation and public relation. You need the support from this community to build a monument in public park. It's not on a private property. So, you know, if you think that you have, we have the, the center entitlement, it's wrong. We need the support from every single resident in this community as much as possible. So we need to go out there and do a PR, work with everyone. Um, answer questions and listen to staff and do everything right by the book. And once again, I thank you very much for your hard work, for your service. Uh, this is a community service. This is not, this is not for us as an individual. This is something where we work together to build something for our community and, and, and make the community feel as such. Thank you very much.
And if there's time, I'd like to make a, a comment. Do we go or do our regular round of comments?
No, we don't have that.
But I ask because, uh, council member Chi Charlie mentioned earlier, and I just feel like there's a need to clarify.
I think we, uh, we're about done.
Could I just make a quick comment because it was regarding his comment about the taxpayers' dollars? And I think if you really care, then you want to hear my comment. Thank you. So as I, I did say that there's, there are no costs to the, to, uh, the cost of construction of the monument to taxpayers, and that is true. It is a decision of this city council. The majority had voted to, um, put it in the hands of the, uh, city, of the Westminster City, take the lead on the construction of the monument. So therefore, how do you really think we can have meetings with our staff? And that is just the cost of doing business. And so please do not go out there, Mr. Chi Charlie, and tell people that I, you know, you know, don't, don't take it so literally, you know, that, that the point is that taxpayers' dollars will not cost, it will not cost them for the construction of the monument. They will raise their own funds. Okay, thank you.
So, meeting adjourned.